The United States of America, the two republics which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to note that all the council members are here except for Councilman Fraylin, Councilman Fairbanks, and Councilman Kerr. The Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and accessible to the members of the public. We'll start with the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on May 15, 2023, is on file with the City Clerk's office. Item E, approval of the treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $923,643.73. Approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $40,201.73. Award of bid for the 13th Street from Oak Street to Beaver Street Concrete Reconstruction 2023 Project, R.L. Teeman Construction Incorporated, in the amount of $584,035.82, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of pay request number three to Pavers Incorporated in the amount of $197,316.10 and change order number one, increase in the amount of $108,684 for the Mill and Overlay 2022 project, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item I, approval of pay request number one to 3FI Incorporated in the amount of $248,389.40 and change order number one, increase the amount of $1,790 for the December 2021 Windstorm FEMA Project DR 4641. Refer claim of Deb Silman for injury occurring on April 21, 2023, to the city attorney and the city's insurance carrier for review and disposition. Item K, resolution number 7073, executing the letter agreement amendment number one between the city and Olson Incorporated to retain Olson Inc. for on-call consulting services related to submission of the city's 2022 emission inventory, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item L, resolution number 7074, executing the administrative assistance contract with the southeast Nebraska Development District, known as SEND, to retain SEND to administrate the Redleg Grant, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item M, resolution number 7075, approving the request from Main Street to close Highway 136, which is also known as Court Street, from Third Street to Seventh Street on Thursday, October 26, 2023, between 3:30 and 7:45 p.m. for the night of the Great Pumpkin Event. Item N, resolution number 7076, entering into the lease between the city and the Eagle Club for the purpose of leasing a portion of city-owned right-of-way. And item O, resolution number 7077, adopting an investment policy, setting forth investment objectives and parameters for the management of funds held and controlled by the city. Anyone want anything pulled off? Seeing none, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
I'll second it.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes, 5-0. Okay, we'll go on to public hearings and bids. The first public hearing is to consider the application of Ten Penns Fund Center LLC Doing Business at Ten Penn Fund Center at 2223 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license.
You want to have these two guys come up first?
Yeah, we'll have these two guys, and then we'll have... Perfect.
Yes, when?
Okay.
Jett McGory, Community Development Director.
Hang on.
Sorry.
Do the both of you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
We do.
Thank you. Okay.
Zoning study on the location came up with no reason to not allow the liquor license on this one. Was a bowling alley with a liquor license two times previously, so nothing has changed that would cause a denial.
Kevin Ross from the Police Department. Investigator Byrne did a background check on Heidi Bell, and it showed nothing that prohibit issuance of the liquor license. Also did a background investigation on Christopher Bell. There were some convictions listed that were misdemeanors. The most recent was in 2011. Don't feel that there's anything in there that would prohibit issuing a liquor license.
Okay. Questions from the council? Okay. Thanks, guys.
I'm Christopher Bell. This is my wife, Heidi Bell. This is my master chef, Rob. I don't know your last name, so... My address, rural route, but I'm buying 2223 Court Street. We're fixing up the place. We got new sewer system, so everything, the health food lady come down, and she took a look at everything, and she gave us two things to fix, and before she even got out the door, we had the two things fixed. It was a light bulb, and was it one of the... Oh, yeah, what was it called? Yeah, sanitizer, hand sanitizer. You're not allowed to wash them in the sink that you're supposed to do dishes in. You gotta have a separate sink for your hands, and then the dishes are, what is it, soap, water, sanitize. Can't wash your hands in that sink. So, really asked for this alcohol license because we're all responsible. I got a pass, but if you got any questions, I'll be glad to answer any of my pass on what I've been convicted for. I grew up, it was, what, 13 years ago that I got in trouble. It was all up in Lincoln. I just grew up late, I guess, you know, so, actually, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I see trucks every day, so... Any questions from the council?
Just good luck.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing that, make a motion to close the public hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:07 p.m.
Second.
Vote, please. And that passes 5-0. Okay, now move on to a motion to accept liquor license.
I move that the application for Ten Penns Fund Center LLC Doing Business as Ten Penns Fund Center, 22323 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, gentlemen? If not, your vote, please. And that passes 5-0.
Still going to have the best hamburger in Nebraska, right, you say?
Right.
We're going to call you on that in a couple of weeks.
It is. It is.
Okay, we have another public hearing. Public hearing to consider the exercising of an option to purchase real estate for the acquisition of real estate property from William C. Schwartzkoff and Michelle L. Schwartzkoff, described as follows. West half of southwest quarter of Section 21, Township 4, North Range 6, east of the 6th PM, Gage County, Nebraska.
Yeah, this is a piece of property we've been working on for some time. It's up in the industrial park. If you're familiar with the area, it would be to the north and to the west of the current industrial park. It'd be straight west of where precise fab is located, the hatchery, some of those locations there. Engage originally got an option on this piece of ground probably about 18 months ago, and we started working through some of the due diligence on there. We've been able to get all of those satisfied. Last one that took the most time was a gas pipeline easement that was granted back in the 1930s, and we were finally able to get that cleaned up, and so we were able to use the property. And so we've, again, taken care of everything there. The next step here is for, hopefully, a vote tonight for you guys to give notice to the Schwartzkoffs that we'd like to proceed with exercising that option. When doing so, we have 90 days then to finish closing, and if... Purchase price about $1.2 million, and we're looking to issue bonds from the LB840 Economic Development Fund to cover that cost.
Discussion, gentlemen.
I'll just add that this is 80 acres, so...
Yep, it's 80 acres, and, you know, as you look into the future, you don't always have the opportunity to get land right by the industrial park to expand it, and, you know, maybe not today, but 10 years from now, there's going to be a lot of people who are going to appreciate that we had this foresight to make this happen, so... Discussion from the public. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:10 p.m.
I'll second it.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes 5-0. Move on to resolutions. Resolution number 7083, executing any and all documents necessary to exercise the option to purchase real estate between the city and William C. Schwartzkoff and Michelle L. Schwartzkoff, including but not limited to an election notice and to deliver said election notice to William C. Schwartzkoff and Michelle L. Schwartzkoff pursuant to said option.
I move the resolution number 7,078 be passed and adopted.
Second.
This basically moves us forward to purchasing this property. Any further discussion? Mr. McLean?
We have a motion. We're ready for a vote.
What's that?
You got a motion on the floor already?
Yes.
So we're ready for a vote?
Yes. All right. Vote, please. Sorry. That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Yep.
Got lost for a minute.
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution number 7079, entering into agreement with Moonraker Mining 1 LLC, setting forth the amount of electrical demand and energy to provide to Moonraker, the rates at which the electrical demand and energy will be provided, and all their obligations of the parties, as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move the resolution number 7,079 be passed and adopted.
Second.
I think it might have been last time we met, we had a contract come forward with you with Moonraker Mining to purchase a piece of ground out in the industrial park that would be on, out there by Teeman's Construction, by Niapco, kind of in that area there. This contract here would be for us to provide power and energy to Moonraker Mining. They have come in, we've got some agreements in place as far as the size of customer that they would be. This contract is a five-year contract. The first three years have a fixed price. Years four and five, there is a provision in there that allows for some adjustments based upon where the market is at that point. The prices in there are not listed because they are proprietary for Moonraker Mining, but we have negotiated all those out. Whatever questions you might have, we'll be happy to answer them.
Might point out the emergency part of that team.
Oh, sure. So, one of the... We offered them two different options in there. One was that they could have a set rate, but we could not interrupt them, and there was another option in there that they would have a little reduced rate, but we'd have the opportunity to interrupt them for up to 100 hours in a year. You may ask, why would you interrupt a customer? Got to think back to Christmas of last year when it got quite cold. You may think back to the winter storm that happened in '21, when you had some rolling blackouts. If we have a customer that size, we'd be able to turn off with a little bit of notice. We can turn them off for up to 100 hours. It gives us an opportunity to keep all everybody else on and have some cost savings when it comes to those huge spikes in energy prices at those moments.
Just real quick, will they be putting up a building, or are they having something else come in that's going to house these units?
So they'll be putting up a container, is what they comes in with. They've got a manufacturer they're working with to bring it on site. I think you'll see a fence go up. You'll see some improvements to the ground itself, probably mostly rocking the area, and then bringing in this particular unit. We're working with them to figure out the layout of the electrical infrastructure they want built out. They'll provide the transformer that'll be installed there, and then plug in this particular container and more as they continue to grow.
Anybody from the public? Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passed 5-0. Number C, resolution number 7080, exiting the letter agreement for professional services between the city and Olson Inc. to retain Olson for general construction observation services for the roofing repair project at the Beatrice Municipal Repair.
I move the resolution number 7,080 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Tobias?
As everybody recalls, the airport got damaged last June. We've gone through a bid process and have hired Sean's Roofing to come in and do that particular work out there. One of the things that was requested was to find somebody to help us with some construction oversight on a particular project. Jett's getting his feet still underneath him and is busy with some other projects. The rest of us aren't necessarily roofing experts, and so we did some looking, and what we found was Olson's was able to come down and provide construction observation services for us. They're going to do it on a, basically, time of materials cost, and so whatever time, materials they have into a particular project, that's what they're going to charge us. You'll see the contract says not to exceed $15,000. I think it's $15,300 is the exact amount. So again, if they get to that number, then for some reason, I think that more, they'll stop. We'll work with them. We'll also work with Sean to make sure that they come in, they don't get in the way of what Sean's doing out there, let him continue to do his work, but they come in every once in a while to just kind of check on things and let us know how progress is being made.
Discussion from the public. State your name and address, please.
It's Anthony Sean, 468 West Lilac Road. I guess my questions would be as to why another service is actually needed to monitor some of the roofing that goes on there. Sean's Roofing is qualified to do the work. I guess I was curious as to why I felt like we were being singled out a little bit here versus anybody doing all of the insurance work on the 90, 80 buildings or whatever that were in the insurance claim to begin with. Why all of a sudden some services are needed to oversight the construction progress out there? Obviously, with everything that we do, there's lots of photos taken, and we have to submit all those photos to the city and to Jett and everybody else if requested for every building permit. So a lot of it's going to be monitored that way as well, and if something's needed after the project's completed to be fixed, that's what we would take care of, so... Just had some questions on that. I don't know if you need me for that, but that's all I need.
You know, I think those are really valid questions. I think there was some concern from a couple of councilmen, and I think this was our best option. I've known the work you've done, and even for myself, and have appreciated that, and I think it'll help us at least move the project forward. Any other discussion? Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes 5-0. Tonight, we have an unusual situation. We don't have enough councilmen to move forward with our ordinances, and so we are going to postpone the ordinances tonight and move on to public comment. Is anyone here for the public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to discussion. And I believe the first one up is the electric department.
My name's Pat Feist. I'm the electric department superintendent for the Board of Public Works. I'm here just to give a quick overview of the electric department and answer any questions that you might have. So I'll just start out with some of our basic system information. We manage and own 10 substations, distribution substations that provide, that step our voltage down and provide distribution voltage levels throughout our neighborhoods, through the industrial park and all of our commercial areas. We do have one transmission switching substation on the west side of Highway 77, right at the river crossing, on the north side there, right by the Dog Park. We manage 6,982 electric services total. 5,948 of those are residential services, and a little over 1,000 of them are commercial industrial services. We do have an automated metering infrastructure system, which consists of... All of our electric meters are, we're able to read those remotely, monitor them remotely, so we can receive time of use information for our industrial customers and our commercial customers. We can get daily information for our residential customers if they request. We also utilize it for outage situations. Every time a meter loses power, it will send out what they call ASGAS, tell us, hey, we just lost power. I get emails from those within two minutes of the outage occurring, so we usually know before we even start getting phone calls that we have issues on the system. So it's been a very beneficial system for us. It's been installed since, full installation was completed in early 2018, so it's been a very, very useful tool for us. One thing that we're a little bit proud of, I guess, we want to pat ourselves on the back, is we have not had an electric rate increase since 2015. And looking forward with the contracts that we have in place with all of our energy suppliers, unless something really major would happen, we don't see any rate increases going forward. We have everything locked in until 2030 at this point in time. So we're hoping to be able to maintain those rates at least through 2030.
So, hey, Pat?
Yes?
So you want me to ask us to ask questions as you go, or at the end, or what? Okay, so how have you been able to do that, not raise this in the last eight years? What happened to make that possible?
The biggest thing that happened was we used to purchase all of our power, energy, our capacity from Nebraska Public Power District. In 2016, I believe it was, they wanted to sign, they wanted us to sign a long-term contract. We asked them for some guarantees on rate increases from them, and they would not provide them. So it led us to looking around to see what other people were doing and what possibilities we had. At that, shortly before that, Nebraska Public Power had joined the Southwest Power Pool, which is a regional transmission authority that manages all the transmission lines in the central part of the United States. So that gave us opportunities to go out and look for other power suppliers, basically anywhere in that footprint. We found some very beneficial rates that we were able to lock in till 2030 with no increases from them, so that's how we've been able to hold things steady. We have seen some issues with material and things like that going up, but we're in a good spot right now, so we feel we can still hold those at this point in time.
Yeah, I knew most of that, but not all of it.
Okay.
But there's probably a lot of people that didn't know that. I mean, I think that's a big deal, not raising rates for eight years and talking about not till 2030, so...
So, yeah, we feel it's a very big deal. Our, a lot of our industrial customers call us on a yearly basis and asking, they ask us what our, when they're forecasting their budgets, they'll ask us what we think the rates are going to do for the next year, one to two years, sometimes three, and when we can tell them that we're not going to raise rates for that timeframe, it's, it helps them out a lot, and it's just very beneficial all the way around, I believe.
Thanks.
Yep. Any other questions on that?
That's one thing I think your department should be very proud of. I mean, that's a big thing for the community, so...
We feel it is, and we've, you know, we feel that... There were some questions at the beginning on whether we were doing the right thing, but we feel we went the right route.
You do a lot of good stuff, but that's really good.
Yeah, well, thank you. Some of the current projects that we have going on right now, we've got several overhead lines that we're rebuilding. One is from, is on Arthur Street from 6th to 13th, and then we're rebuilding, that's the main line circuit on that street, and then we're rebuilding all the taps through the alleys from Monroe to Lincoln. So we have one crew working on that. We also have a crew working on the west side from the river out to Garden Street on the north side of Court. Oh, we're rebuilding that main line there and doing some improvements and repairs on that side as well. We do have some underground primary extensions that we're working on this year. One is a secondary feed out to the North Gate area, which is the Beatrice Community Hospital. There's a dialysis treatment center out there also. They're currently on just a single line, so we feel we need to have a secondary way to feed that area just with the facilities that are out there. We want to be sure we can maintain power to them as best as possible. And then we also have a primary extension that we're going to be starting for the new elementary school, hopefully later this week. And in that same area at 28th and Lincoln, we have a substation that we're rebuilding. The main reason we're rebuilding that is we converted that whole area from, it was part of our voltage conversion project. We converted all the distribution circuits from 4160 to 12.5 KV. So we converted all the circuits, and we have that substation offline now. We're waiting on some equipment to be able to distribute 12.5 out of that substation. So those are the main, the big projects that we have going on this year. There is a map that I put on there just of our substation locations. It's not the best map, but it is kind of the best I could do on, for this size. We have, our largest one is in the industrial park, substation number nine, and then we just, they're spread out geographically throughout the town to feed all the areas. And then I also have just some of the recent substation upgrades we've done, substation number one at Fourth and Grant. I look back at that, that's not really recent. It was in the late 90s, so time gets away from me a little bit sometimes, but it is a substation that we rebuilt, moved out of the floodplain that used to be at first in Ella Street. Obviously, that wasn't a good location for electrical equipment, but we moved it up to Fourth and Grant Street there by the water reservoir. We have all new equipment there. We have a good breaker lineup. The second picture there shows the breaker lineup that we've kind of standardized on. It's, we've had very good luck with it. It was very highly recommended. A lot of other companies that we work with on, for engineering purposes, use a very similar lineup, and we've used that in several other substations, and we're planning on using it going forward on any subs that we rebuild, so... The next one is Sub 6. That's the most recent one we've done. That is right across the highway from Southeast Community College. That was just finished last year. We put a new transformer in there, new building, a new breaker lineup. The breaker lineup is the exact same footprint as the one at Sub 1, so we reutilize that same equipment. That helps us in multiple reasons. Repair parts, we don't need to stock a bunch of different ones. We can stock one set for, we can stock one set for four subs that we have right now. So as we improve that, we reduce our inventory, reduce our costs on hand that we have to keep for that, so... The last one I had there was substation number nine, which is the one in the industrial park. Like I said, that's our largest substation. We use a little bit different breaker there. That was, we built that one like in the late 90s. That was, it was recommended to us at the time to use oil circuit breakers. They've been very, very good. We haven't had any issues with those since it was installed and up and running in the early 90s, so we've had very good luck with it. But that's kind of just an overview of some of the equipment that we're using on our larger, in our substations. Real basic information on the system itself. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you gentlemen might have on anything.
I just mentioned, I think, the electric department. You guys have a lot of experience. A number of people have been with you for a long time. A number of people have been with you for a long time.
Yes. We have, there's six, well, actually, we're at 15 employees right now. We just, our engineer retired last week. He was 67 and he decided he was going to take some time and enjoy himself, so I don't blame him. So right now, we're at, we're at 15 employees. We have, I have myself, I have two foremen, one transmission, substation foreman, and one distribution foreman. I have eight linemen and several technicians that manage the substations and do IT work and things like that.
Very well-run department.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Bob, I also think that Pat needs to be committed for not only running a great operation and leading a great group of people, but it is very important that the citizens of Beatrice can understand that the rate that they're paying, they haven't seen an increase for five years and chances are it's not going to happen for a little bit more. That's such an important thing when you budget in your own household. But it's also very important because of what we just did tonight by taking an option on a piece of property out in industrial park as well as for the moonraker process. It's important that people understand we got that business because of what Tobias and Pat have done in the last 10 years and how we've prepared ourselves, you know, for that type of new industry. And Beatrice is really in very, very good shape compared to a lot of other communities in a lot of things. They run a lean operation and I think, thank you very much for moving Beatrice forward and your continued leadership.
You're welcome. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's shop the hook.
All right, thanks.
We have one more discussion report tonight, and that would be Jason Moore with the Clean City Week 2023 review.
Is it on the, click on the next, the tab over.
Which one?
Not that one. That's your email.
That's what we're in right now.
The first, is it the first one?
No.
No. Close out of the first one if you don't mean that one. Maybe it'll, it must not have been.
I'll get Kevin here, so we'll see if I can. Absolutely.
You got to text something.
Trying to remember. It's a password that I use once a year. I remember passwords. I have it once a year, so I tell you what, let me get my phone here real fast.
I know that feeling.
I know, right?
Jeez. I advise you just to use bah bah, you know, from now on.
Yeah, this is IT's password. This is IT doing this. I'm looking at this password going, you're kidding me, right? Yeah, it's, we'll go off of it.
All right, gentlemen. So as some of the numbers that you've seen, that you guys have got in front of you, it was a good year for us. Looking at this, we had a total of 1,187 stops. And what we have, what we've seen was, other than the, I guess, anomaly, if you'll call it that, 2022, which was a shortened Clean City year, I believe that was won six months after the 2021 pickup, we did have 1,187 stops. We had a total of 280 man-hours. We had 92 loads of material that was taken to the landfill at an expense of $13,217.85. That accounted or amounted to 149.22 tons of material that we took into the landfill. That's 150 tons of material that we have cleaned out of the city and gotten rid of. So Clean City is something, it's a program that's been with the city of Beatrice since 1989, so I believe this is the 34th year for it. It's a, it's a, it's a great program. We had a few bumps in there, I believe back 2016, 2017, where we started getting a lot of household garbage that was put out and it was just expected that we were going to take it. We really cracked down, really pushed it out there that Clean City is, is a large item pickup. We did not pick up the material that was left. And so we really emphasized that this is for the larger items, your washers, your dryers, your couches, recliners, your bedroom sets, whatnots like that. We did have a total of 225 locations that were partial pickups. That is, we pull up to Tobias's house and Tobias has got a tire out in front and he's got a recliner. We pick up the recliner, we leave the tire. So we had a total of 225 partials. We had a total of 67 that were declined 100%. What that may have been was that may have been somebody stuck out. We had one, one residence out east that was about 50 feet long. It was about eight feet wide and it was probably five feet high. It would have taken more than two dump trucks to haul it all off. Most of it was bags of clothes, bags of garbage, bags of whatnots. It had one recliner that was underneath of it and it was buried. We left the recliner. So I'm not going to have guys that are out there trying to do this, sort through garbage to get to the one item underneath of things. And so we left the recliner and left everything else, so. But as, from what I've seen, this is my 10th Clean City, as I look at it, I sit back and look, this was probably one of our better years. We, I didn't see a lot of places where we had a lot of items out there that we left. Again, you see, you see 225. When you have 1,200 locations that you're picking up, rounded up, that's, that's not a lot. And when I say that, it may be one item that got left. It may have been some wood or some lumber, whatnot, that we left that was not supposed to be picked up. So really, it was a good year. We had a few white goods that were out. Price of iron is down a little bit. The scrappers weren't out maybe as heavy as what they've been in the past. So we did pick up a few white goods and we took them down to Beatrice's scrap. So other than that, we had totals, Monday, we had 375 locations, I'm sorry, we had 551 locations on Monday, 299 on Tuesday, and 337 on Wednesday. So the guys working 410s, it works out really well with those higher numbers. We can get around and get them when items are left. If residents go out and they put them in their Mars tote, then the next day, my guys will come through residential pickups and a lot of it gets picked up. We really did not have a lot of special pickups. And when we call it a special pickup, that is you put out items that for one Clean City couldn't pick up, so you call Mars and you say, hey, I'd like to schedule a special pickup. We go out and we pick it up with a rear loader. Say it would be a mattress or something we may not have been able to have picked up. Mars would then go out and pick it up. We really didn't have that this year. Last year, we had some, so I think that's a good thing. We did have the mattress drop-off in the last few years. We've kind of moved that around a little bit due to the bed bug problem that we have and a lot of communities have. I don't like my guys touching mattresses. And so even with Mars, when we pick them up, we require people to wrap them before, and tape them up before we will actually go out and pick them up and dispose of them. So a few years ago, we switched it. We started putting a roll-off at a central location. We had it at First Ella, we had it at the Scott Street Ballfields. Those locations were abused. We took it out to the compost site at the landfill. I have a landfill attendance, compost attendance onsite from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And so somebody pulls through, we check a driver's license to make sure that they are a Beatrice resident, and the guys point them to the roll-off. So this year, we did have nine 30-yard roll-offs that were dropped off, full of mattresses. If you look, last year was crazy. We had 16 30-yard roll-offs, even being in a short year. But the years before that, we were 10, 17, 13. So I'm going to say nine is less than what we've had. I think if you want to take one, you know, a nice thing out of the mattress drop-off is maybe we've had less mattresses dropped off. So, but it works really well. I haven't heard too many people complain about having it at the compost site. My guys, it doesn't seem to bother them a whole lot. Makes it a little easier. A Mars employee will come through doing our roll-offs. He'll drop a box, pick it up, take it up, dump it in the landfill, and we're able to get rid of it that way. So this year, along with every other year, we've had, Clean City is a joint effort. We have a street department, we have water department, we've had electric help us in the past. We've got Mars employees helped out as well as the landfill staying late and covering up all the extra material that is coming in with all of our dump trucks just coming in rapid fire. So it does take a little extra, plus we have all of the people answering the phones, the IT guys that are, that are taking the information down and logging the information in the computer as well as administrative assistants that are, that are taking all the phone calls and whatnot beforehand. So I'd say that overall, it's a great program. And first and foremost, we didn't have any injuries and we didn't have any accidents. That's very, very big for me. No backing accidents and no lifting injuries. So when I can say that we didn't have any injuries, that's a, that's a very big thing. So good program. Any questions?
Other than thank you for doing that, I think, you know, I'm not sure how many cities actually have a Clean City pickup, but ours works very, really well and I think you refined it very well, so thank you.
Jason, I'll tell you, you don't, we don't always get compliments around here. And I literally had two of my fairly close neighbors not only think the guys did it well, which you would expect, okay, but they did it with a great attitude, too. That was what set them apart. It kind of came out of the woodwork and just told me that, so I pass it on to you. Thank those guys for the job they did.
You bet.
Yep.
It's, it's interesting to see that, that the, that the mattress drop out at the, at the landfill has worked. That's fabulous. And if you have nine 30-yard roll-offs, then it's working well. I'm so happy for you that identification and monitoring of that has really done well. We are just marveled every year at how many mattresses get saved and then thrown away at that one week in the year. It's just a phenomenal issue. But nonetheless, we've now found a way to do it without putting people in jeopardy and having to deal with those things. And so.
Yeah, it sounds like a good year. Congratulations. Move forward where you're at.
It was, it was a good year. Thank you guys very much.
Okay. We are going to go into executive session tonight. However, before we do that, the next regular city council meeting will be June 19th, 2023, at 7:00 PM here. There will be a work session on that same night starting at 6:00 PM. So that will, as a matter of fact, at the open, the work session, we will be talking about three committees that we're going to form to deal with some long-range challenges the city has, such as the Dempster's property, the downtown revitalization that's taking place. And then we're starting the process of looking at ordinances to see how we can refine and make some of those better. So that will, that's how our hour will be spent. And we also might just touch base a little bit about recycling. We've had some questions on recycling and I think we can go over about where we're at and some of the options that we do have for the citizens of Beatrice. That said, Mr. McLean?
I move the city, Beatrice City Council going into closed session at 7:43 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiations.
Second. Your vote, please. And that passes 5-0.